And Maureen, could we please have Roca?
Mayor Mangarelli is excused. Mayor Protamor.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson, he's not here yet. Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Six, actually five are present.
Thank you, Maureen. So we will, today, this study session, we have one item, and it is presentation by the Prescott area Young Professional Advisory Committee. And I understand that Grant Casada will do the presentation? Yes, Grant, would you like to come on up? And thank you all for coming. It's nice to see you.
How are all you doing?
We're doing great.
Okay, great. Full stomachs lunchtime, I'm sure it's sleepy time. Okay. Well, I, my name's Grant Casada. I Prescott local, myself and my business partner Jesse Burke back here. We own John Hancock Barber Shop, and we're getting ready to do a couple other things here in town. So.
We're excited about that other thing.
Great, great. We'll have you guys down for an opening party when that comes to be. So I sit on the board for Prescott area Young Professionals. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but it's a subsidiary of the Chamber of Commerce. And we are, we pretty much exist to be the voice of young professionals within the community that are about 40, 42, and under. Most of us at some level are, the whole idea, I guess, is young professionals within the community that are giving back on an economic level, that are family-based, have moved here, or they're from here to really set down roots and live in the area. Most of us are either business owners, or at some level, professionals within the community, whatever that might look like. So we were coming to you today in regards to a conversation we had with Mayor Mangarelli, and City Manager Mike Lamar, and some of the other ladies and gentlemen in this room. And it's, the problem of trying to, part of it is trying to keep some of the talent that we have here through Embry-Riddle and some of the other colleges, and keeping young professionals here fixed, and a reason for them to stick around without leaving for better opportunities. So we were addressing that with Mayor Mangarelli, and he came up with this advisory committee, and some hypothetical questions on what would, what would we do with one city block if, if we had the opportunity to kind of revamp some block in downtown Prescott? So we sat together, myself and the rest of the board members, and, or this committee here, and we started looking at some of the other cities around North America. We kind of focused more on the West Coast, so Boise, or not Boise, but Coeur d'Alene. We had a lot of the cities that are a little bit closer our size, and kind of what is a unique draw for them? Durango, I'm sure a lot of us have been up here to Durango, Coeur d'Alene, Sioux Falls. So we were trying to limit the, the number and the capacity to where it was roughly around 40 to maybe 100,000. And what is a unique draw for the people that are coming to those areas to either visit, or to keep people there and engage in the community? So we kind of came up with the whole, the huge push nowadays, we live in an experiential society, and a lot of people nowadays are, especially young people, are moving a lot more towards the live, live-work-play atmosphere. So they want to have more of an experience-based, exactly that, an experience-based type of life where they're living at. They want to live in an area that kind of caters to their wants and desires and their needs. And they're not necessarily focused on making more money, they just want to be more productive with their time, and, you know, with their family, or with their friends. And so you have areas that are popping up where you start seeing these kind of almost little mini communities. So I was recently up in Tacoma last week, in Seattle, and I'm sure a lot of you have been down in Phoenix, and you have these little, these buildings that are, first level, you have shops and eateries and all this stuff, and then the second, third, fourth, fifth level are livable spaces. So that was in, one of the options we were playing with, within the community. If we had a block, what would that look like? What could we bring to Prescott that would allow younger people, or just people in general, to really enjoy what Prescott has to offer? A lot of the downtown amenities that are already here, but then obviously with a downtown block, how could we better, not exploit it, but really just use it to a more of a fuller capacity, to bring in growth, to bring in economic stability, more of a unique environment to something that's unique in this, this area? So that was one of those ideas, maybe a kid splash pad. You know, some of the, incorporating an ample indoor space for conferences, and the equipment necessary to host technology and industry retreats. So some type of conference center attached to that. But really making this area of Yawapai County like the hub for what is, what is happening, and pushing forward with, you know, the next 10, 15 years of economic development, stability, and integration within Prescott as a society. And that was the first one. Any questions on that? Or I'm sure most of you guys have seen.
Any questions from council or comments?
I just have a comment. You mentioned Durango. It'd be real easy, just put about 10 breweries on that block, and you would have Durango.
Yeah, I also heard that cities having microbreweries now are a real millennial type of young professional trend attractor. And I was reading about Sioux Falls, South Dakota, that had their falls actually covered up by a concrete bridge structure. And they created a, almost like a city walk park. They pulled that structure apart, kind of accentuated the falls there, and made it a, kind of a destination that really upgraded their downtown. And I think with some of the proposals that we've seen, we might have our Granite Creek area become more of a city walk destination.
We're actually working on that, yes.
That would be connected to that, to your location as well.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely right. Unique thing about all those that we lack is a lot of water. So maybe we'll work on a great pumping system that'll pump some, fill up that whole creek, and a lot more walkability, but.
If you fill it, they will come.
Yes, yeah. There's got to be some sophisticated, you know, pumping technology that can get water from the north to the south.
Grant, did you look at Bozeman, Montana, by any chance?
Did we, you guys? We did? Okay.
It's very similar to Prescott as far as it's a college town, Montana State, and about 40,000. And they're really growing with young people.
They are, yeah.
A lot of that's technology, but.
Yes, ma'am. Which I know, as well as you guys, we all know in this room, Embry-Riddle has been a very underutilized asset, especially in the last five, 10 years of what they are producing. And then obviously, all those young people are leaving, and we're not able to keep them here. So be great to have reasons for them to stick around, very, like you're saying, technology and stuff like that, businesses. So that was the first part of the conversation. The next part in how to incorporate and better utilize Prescott as a whole was the actual greenway. So we were talking with that. I think we've been talking about this conversation for about the last year, guys, or nine months to a year. So this is something on our radar as well, is the walkability factor of what brings people to Prescott. It's got to be more than just the downtown Whiskey Row. I mean, it's, it's great, it's a huge piece of history. I grew up here, love Whiskey Row. Personally, I don't go down there too often unless I'm bringing visitors. I, now I'm trying to reach out and find other places within town to kind of frequent. And so the idea of the walkable space, and being able to use some of the other assets that we have here in Prescott, are you guys familiar with Jefferson Park at all? So I say Jefferson Park because you guys, the other name you would know it as is Mile High Middle School.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's a city park, but everybody just knows it as Mile High Middle School. It's actually Jefferson City, or Jefferson Park. I spoke with, with John, sits on the superintendent board, John, help? John Mackin, there we go. He was my young life leader when I was a kid, I should know his name. So I was speaking to him about it, and he's superintendent for the school board, and he himself didn't know exactly how the full usage goes with, with the public being able to use Jefferson Park in off-hours, in summer months. He knows that we can submit permitting, but that's, outside of that, nobody really knows, you know, the flexibilities between Jefferson Park, and when it's Prescott Mile High, and being able to use it. You know, is it okay to open it up during summer months, and have kids go down there and play soccer, or football, or frisbee, or, hey, there's a gate there and nobody can use it? And so everybody just frequents the square? But that's a great asset that's being underutilized, so maybe really looking into that and seeing how we can actually open that up, make it more usable for Prescott, more usable for visitors. And then really, I don't even know if we have to really market it, but maybe just simply putting an actual billboard on there that people know, hey, it's not just the school, because you have the huge billboard on Goodwin, but, and maybe a sign that says Jefferson Park, and so people kind of understand, okay, it's a school, but it's also a park, and if the gate's open, we can use it. But usable space downtown for activities, and then connecting Jefferson Park, or Prescott Mile High, with some of the events they have down there, with the walkability through the greenway down to Granite Creek Park. So have any of you gentlemen or ladies, have you walked the actual greenway before?
Have they?
Okay. So I grew up here, I've never walked, I've walked maybe small sections of it, or parts of it. But when we started talking about this a couple months ago, there's about six of us after our little meeting, we're like, hey, let's actually go walk this and see.
Beautiful.
What there is, you know, what are we actually talking about? Usually if you're seen at any level, you're seeing it from a top view down, it looks a little seedy, you know, there's places underneath some of the streets, and you always hear the stories of, you know, some of the homeless people hanging out down there. So we walked the whole thing from the south side to the north side. We started at Mile High, and then walked up to Granite Creek Park. It's about eight tenths of a mile. It's a nice walk. There's about four, four guys and four gals that walked it. It's nice, it's quick. The trail is, there is a trail, but it's not really at, you know, it's, it's not really well taken care of. There's a lot of brush and overhang, and so it creates more of a looming experience. It's not really inviting. On top of that, walking through that area, especially maybe at dusk, or dawn, or even middle of the day, there are a lot of chain link fences running the entire perimeter of the entire greenway. So I would think, as, if I was a female, and I was, we were talking with some of the females in here, but if you're out there walking by yourself, there's absolutely no way to get off that trail unless you go back to how you got on, or if you just keep walking, and you hope to run across, I think there's only two or three ways off of that trail in about eight tenths of a mile. So once you get in there, you're pretty much stuck to the trail. You can't get off, you're either walking into private property, or you're walking into some of the little industrial buildings that are down there, or commercial spaces. But most of them have all put chain link fences, or some type of fencing that keeps whoever's walking the trail stuck in there. Which I think really has led to a lot of people not using it, because they don't know how to get off, they don't know, okay, if I pop in next to El Gato Azul, where's this thing going to pop me out at? Like, I only want to walk down this far, how can I get out? Nobody really knows. So it was a good eye-opening little jaunt down. It wasn't as unsafe as we all thought it was. I think we were all expecting some homeless people.
Well, you're all here, so that's good.
All survived. So it wasn't as unsafe it was, as it was, and it wasn't as, as dirty as I thought it would be. I think with a little bit of tender love and care, and a plan on how to keep it actually clean, and an inviting environment, and maybe widening the paths, it would be a really enjoyable walk path, especially if we start simply letting people know that, hey, we've, we've put a little bit of money into this, we're investing in the community, we're now connecting Granite Creek Park to Jefferson Park or Mile High. You can walk the whole thing back and forth. The ability to put events at Granite Creek Park at the same time as Jefferson Park, and then now allowing the walkability between the two locations. I don't know, maybe we do a car show at one, and you do, I don't know, food vendors at another location. Now people are able to walk back and forth, they're not having to cut through town, they're able to actually enjoy a nice stroll underneath the trees. So stuff along that line, but would, would definitely make for a very enjoyable walk. So I'm only saying this because prior to myself sitting on this council, Jesse and I purchased a building on the backside of Granite Creek Park, down off of North Granite Street. And we own about 100 yards, Jesse? And like 85, 100 yards? And as soon as we saw it, we're like, this is a great piece of property, it's not being utilized, we're going to take advantage of it, and we're going to clean it up ourselves. And so that was the premise, and that, that's built into our business plan and our model for when we start breaking ground on cleaning up that entire building, and regentrifying that area. But our idea was, hey, we're from Prescott, we love Prescott, how do we make Prescott better? And as business owners, this is the way we can do it. We happen to own a piece of property that's right on the creek, we're going to shell out our own money to make it better. And then some of our friends here invited me to sit on the board, and so here I am. And when I entered, they were already talking about this, so it was like, hey, hey, great, this is what we're going to do. But now, let's look at it at a bit of bigger picture, what can we do as Prescott to make that entire area actually better, more appealing to either visitors, or for the locals to use on a daily basis, especially when it's hot like this and nobody wants to walk outside? At least we're not in Phoenix, but.
So Grant, could I have City Manager Michael Lamar speak to a little bit of what's, what's happening with that? Because I believe we can all work together on this.
Yeah, and I think Grant came to the last meeting. I think some of the things that we're doing dovetail with what you guys are talking about in terms of the Granite Creek Corridor Revitalization Committee. I know that Kristi Ebersson is chairing that, and is Kristi in your group too?
She was until about a week ago, or until that meeting.
Did you run her out?
I think she ran herself out.
Did you? But she's signed a taking the bull by the horns with this project, and from El Gato Azul, all the way to Granite Creek Park, we're going to work on cleaning up the whole area through our neighborhood services. Joe Baines went with Kristi the other day to walk it, to find better ingress and egress to get people on and off it. It get back to something I've said countless times to all of you, is that we have a tremendous amount of assets, this is one that's been underutilized, as Grant said. We want to improve the signage, we want families to go down there. It, it's great connectivity for pedestrians that can stay off the street, if they know what's up above them as they cross under some of these overpasses. I walked it last week. I think it has unlimited potential, and I don't think you're talking about spending a lot of money to open it up. One of the things Grant said to me, or I think it might have been Jesse, was, you know, because all of it's in the FEMA floodway, when people develop, there's a certain fear that you're opening Pandora's Box if you go out there and clean things up. So one of the things I'm telling our guys is, I want a list of everything you can do in the greenway, and that's what we need to distribute to the downtown business owners. Not a list of, stay out of there, you can't take anything out. It's what can you do to the vegetation and clean up the area behind your business? And Matt Colleen's putting that together. I think it's really something that makes a tremendous amount of sense. It's probably a long time overdue. I was even thinking, a couple of the overpasses, they do feel a little bit foreboding. It started to rain when I was walking it, and it ended up being me and a homeless guy that I don't think was talking to me, he was just talking. But it was an interesting cultural experience down there. He has a little bit of a potty mouth, too. But anyway, but I was thinking, you know, even some of the foreboding underpasses could be cool for kids. I was even, I called Billy, I'm like, why don't we call this like the Chupacabra Trail? You know, paint some things underneath the overpasses, and encourage kids to go find the goat eater, you know? I'm half kidding, but I'm really not. I mean.
Would work great.
It would be cool. It'd be cool culturally, it'd be cool from an interesting niche. But the bottom line is, we need to make it feel safe so you can take your kids down there and not worry about what they're hearing or seeing.
And I'm meeting Kristi tomorrow at Charlotte Hall, and we're going to look at, you know, because we need ADA access, and maybe that's a spot for that, so. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, so to continue a little bit further on that footpath, if you scroll through Google Earth, you can see where the old trail, or railroad track used to be. But it's entirely green from Granite Creek Park, that southwest corner, Granite Creek Park. It swings around into, you know, behind McDonald's, and then through Iron Springs Road all the way up. And that entire area, I believe the city might have annexed a lot of that to private properties, or it's just completely unused. But a lot of these cities that had railroads running through them in the past, they're starting to reuse those railroad tracks now, because it's perfect easements for footpaths and walkability. And so even to think long-term, what would it look like if we connected Iron Springs Road, you know, up at Williamson Valley, or even further, all the way down to downtown? You have bike paths and walk paths that are already on a nice level path that was created for the trains, you know, 100 years ago, that we could hopefully reintegrate back into use within Prescott. And if you follow it on Google Earth, or you just drive by and you're looking, you realize that entire railroad track system is completely underneath a nice canopy of green trees. And you're walking right next to streams that, you know, flow a week or two out of the year, but at least they flow every once in a while. But, you know, it's another good opportunity of being able to maximize all of that area instead of just eight, you know, eight tenths of a mile, but really connecting a lot of stuff to North Prescott, Iron Springs Road, Fort Greene Park, and then down. So. Anything else, guys? I'm just, I'm just speaking. Yes. Yep. So part of that too, even that green belt that would connect to the rodeo grounds, I mean, it puts you right out, I think, maybe 50 yards off from the rodeo, at a couple different areas. So you could walk from some of the hotels that are down here, walk the green path all the way up to either McDonald's, or a little bit further up, and just push right out into the rodeo. You can push a lot of different areas on that footpath into different areas in, in town in general. Some of the uses we're looking at for, for Jefferson Park, and for Granite Creek Park, is really trying to host some of the events that I know we were putting on down at the square. So I believe there was a, something that passed last year, I think, we used to have about 27, 28 events that were hosted at the square, and something passed, the county passed it to where now there's only 12, 13 events, so we've pretty much cut that in half, the number of events that we used to be able to put down at the square. So maybe reaching out to some of those vendors, or those same events that maybe we, we're familiar with coming here for years on end, and now we're not doing it anymore, now we maybe start hosting them at Granite Creek Park, or actively trying to reincorporate Granite Creek Park, or Jefferson Park back into the entire mix, and allowing the people of Prescott, that, you know, the tourist traffic, really other places or other options that are greenways for them to hang out at. So Granite Creek Park, Jefferson Park, the square. But, you know, those, Jefferson Park and Granite Creek Park, they're parks, so you want people to be outside. I know the county does not want people all the time to be on the courthouse, so I think we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot if we're not maximizing the ability for the people of Prescott, and for tourism to, to take advantage of what we have right in our backyard.
Where do food trucks fit into your conversation?
Love food trucks, that's a good question. There's one outside. So, so the state just passed that regulation, and it's down to the cities, I believe. So it's the state passed it, the county passed it, and now it's down to the city level of how to incorporate that at a, a level to allow them, either on private property or on public property. You know, I think probably the easiest way to get the word out that maybe it's, food trucks are being incorporated into the city, which I don't know exactly if you guys have a timeline for that, or what you're looking for, but probably would be to put a huge kind of food truck venue on at Granite Creek Park, or at Jefferson, or maybe at both. But it allows the people to kind of, maybe we, you guys come up with a plan of like, okay, at what point is Prescott going to kind of take ownership of the entire greenway? The parks really try to reintegrate it back into the community? And then you hold an event, I don't know, maybe once a month, to where it's forcing people to come out of their, their house, and get out of what they're familiar with, which is the square. And now, once a month, or twice a month, for maybe six months, there's an event at Jefferson, or at Granite, or at both, and it's, now it's getting people to use the walkable space. But I think it's, it's really easy, within the span of maybe four to six months, to retrain a lot of people that are from Prescott on, hey, now we have this opportunity, these are here, and it would probably be a lot easier way to market and get use out of it than it would be to try to just do word of mouth of like, oh, by the way, this is open, or there's something about the greenway, I'll never go down there. But if we're doing events, and then at the events, we're telling people like, oh, we've cleaned this entire area up, you can walk right up there, it's three quarters a mile, they're a lot more apt to do it, you're going to get, you know, several hundred people a day doing it during that time, or 1,000 people, and then that's just going to kind of spread.
Well, Prescott Downtown Partnership, one of their goals is to expand the downtown from the plaza, just to, to take in the whole entertainment district. So that's one of their goals this year, is to look at that, you know, how do they expand that? So I think that goes along with, and there are several of your friends that are serving on that committee as well, so. Michael, you had something?
Well, I just wanted to say on the food truck element, it's not specifically what Grant's talking about, but for North Prescott, out by the airport, because kind of, there's a dearth of food opportunities out there. APS and C-Tech, Yawapai College, are going to host in their parking lot a number of food trucks, starting August 3rd, as a test case to see how this works. There's also a lot of limitations now about what you can do to regulate it. But I think that that North Prescott model could come downtown with certain restrictions or what have you, but it's going to be interesting to see how that works up there.
That's what I was wondering. I was wondering if there was, if they had thought at all about a congregation place for food trucks?
There's some lots that would make perfect sense.
There's discussion of one lot and empty lot downtown, not really liberty to say at this point, but talking about making it a food truck court of some sort. But on that new law going into effect August 3rd, and that's why this, the airport's going to happen August 3rd. Currently, we, we don't allow for food trucks or their temporary uses on commercial property. As of August 3rd, we're obligated to allow those types of uses, with certain limits, certain limitations. We can still require, you know, setbacks from the road, and other, and they obviously have to meet all the county health requirements and all that. But effectively, if you allow a restaurant in that zone, you have to allow for food trucks on private property. On the city property, we still regulate the use of city property by commercial business, just like we would any other. So whether we allow them to use the city streets, and parking spaces on the street is a sort of decision. You know, whether we allow them in parks, and other sort of non-street city property, city hall, parking lot, whatever, that becomes basically a contractual kind of arrangement, or a permitting kind of arrangement with the, with the food truck operators. And those can be either sort of permanent, or just temporary, you know, during an event, for instance.
One thing you could share with the city manager, we were looking at some things today, and since APS has moved out of their downtown yard, there's great access to that backside of APS Yard, where it has a hard surface for food trucks, that's right next to the park, that energizes that whole area for people downtown to walk in that creek area, to go to a place where it's solid surface, trucks can get in and out, and, you know, a trade of property, or a lease of property, to make that happen along the greenways would probably be a pretty good idea.
It's a good idea too, Stephen. There's some interest, APS and Prescott College are interested in the redevelopment of this whole area, too. There's really good opportunities for partnership, for all of us to have a vested interest in the redevelopment of the Granite Creek Corridor. And everybody's engaged and excited. It's, I think it's an opportunity that people have been waiting for, so.
Well, I think that, you know, I mentioned the food trucks, because, you know, if a restaurant decided to go into a certain location, it would just be like a congregation of food trucks being considered a restaurant. You know, I, I think that the food trucks dispersed throughout the city are going to, and I'm not into protectionism, but I think that people who have invested in brick and mortar, and are, are there permanently, are, let's say, in, not in danger, but certainly are looking at competition that possibly, you know, could be, I don't want to say favored by the city, but we don't want to place people in, in areas where they're. where they're competing directly and with our brick and mortar folks, although I would love to have a certain area with food trucks in them.
Steve, that's part of the reason that we're concentrating initially on North Prescott. I don't think there's a lot of brick and mortar out by the airport. And that's part of the reason that APS and the college are so interested in having food trucks in their yard for their students and what have you. So, you know, there are more complications when you have brick and mortar competition. I've thought about approaching some of the brick and mortar and seeing, as John said, if you had a designated space, if it was first come, first served, but you encouraged brick and mortar to have a mobile presence, i.e. El Gato decides they want to do a food truck.
Sure.
And I think that those are some of the outreaches we would have to do if we move to a downtown model.
But from your standpoint, I was just wondering if you had discussed not just food trucks, but also placement of food trucks?
I do know the piece of property that was just discussed about the possibility of food trucks. I know I spoke to the owner of that property about a year ago and he was telling me exactly what he was going to do with that. So I don't know if it's open to divulge where it's at, but it's a great location. I think it's a good opportunity. It creates a nice, unique dining experience that is not present in downtown. I will say, a lot of downtown is lacking in outdoor environment for any type of food or beverage consumption. That was one of the things we were capitalizing on with our location. I would say that probably the best, if you guys haven't been there yet, the best location for any type of outside experience and the largest venue that we have currently in Prescott, I believe, is Mark's Beer Garden, which is up in Forbin Park. So that gentleman just opened up. It's got a very large backyard, he does live music. But that's a great, great location, a great spot. And that ties once again right into that green corridor that's very easily accessible. And you're talking from Mark's Beer Garden down to here, a mile and a half, two miles. That's not far for a walk or a bike ride. But that is a good outside experience. I think we, for being in such a great community and a good climate, you know, we are kind of a Mediterranean climate. But we have the ability to be outside and active a pretty solid 10 months out of the year. So to not have more restaurants have that capability and offer that, it's kind of a shame. But you know, where traditionally, we want to go in and eat at fixed dining locations, which is, they're all over the place, they're always busy, especially on the weekends. Some of these locations like food trucks, they provide a quick, you know, dining location with a nice outside atmosphere. And that is bringing something unique that a lot of these brick and mortar stores can't provide, just period. So as a location wise, to get back to your question, the one I know of is the one that's down the road here. Maybe it starts off with hosting a little bit more events or maybe Prescott is a little bit more friendly with maybe four or five a year, throughout the year at Granite Creek or Jefferson, to where it gets people maybe seeing them or comfortable with them. Because I know they, every time we've hosted events at Jefferson Park or Mile High, it does take off. We have several thousand people that come to enjoy the food trucks. But Hastings parking lot would have been nice, but I guess it's a 7-Eleven now, so. But yeah, I don't know really, do you guys have any good locations downtown, thinking of?
We'll take APS parking, the old APS lot.
Okay.
Put 20 of them right there, it's right next to North.
Here we go. There is, are you guys familiar with a little outdoor community garden that's right there? I had no idea there's a community garden, there's one right there at the APS. So once again, apparently it has a draw because it exists. But I've never, I didn't know it was down there. I've talked to many people, they didn't know it's down there. So if we're able to tap into that and the food trucks and a larger farmer's market and maybe make it like a tri-city market that's right there. I mean, it's very accessible. But once again, it gets people into that greenway, it gets people, the buzz talking and everybody kind of excited about certain events and certain things that are down there.
Thank you, Grant. Anyone, anyone have any other comments you'd like to make? Well, I would just like to say, I remember when you came to town, came back, yeah. And it's nice to have you here. And P-A-Y-P, you guys do a great job. You put on One Heck of a Party in the Pines. And we appreciate, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the council, we really appreciate these ideas. And we are working on some of them. And so I invite you to just, I know Jesse was at that meeting, just jump right in and join us on it. So, Michael, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
It's nice to hear that a lot of what we're thinking isn't out of whack with what the private sector feels is important. You know, there's some synergies with what we're doing right this minute. You know, and a lot of what you're talking about isn't speculative, let's try. We're really getting close to making a lot of this happen, closer than I think a lot of people realize.
And we invite, we just so appreciate your thoughts on this and thank you for what you've done today.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Grant.
You're welcome, sir. Was there, did you have questions, answers, anything?
Anyone from the public would like to speak, we do, okay. Sandy?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Pro Tem, Council. Just a couple of things. One, the trail has been extended further south from Mile High Middle School to, I'm not sure exactly, it's a couple of blocks off of where White Spar goes through there. And they're heading over towards the Safeway Copper Basin area with it. Another thing is that they are in the works and almost have the clearances from the VA to connect up around the tribal area through the VA and over to Prescott Valley with that trail, the greenways.
Great.
So that's going on now and that's been going on for a while.
We just need to make it so people know about it, their signage there and we clean it all up.
There's a bridge over something that has to be put in and the VA is dragging their heels all over the place on that. But otherwise, the clearances are all there and everything's being laid out. So that is going on.
Thank you.
Ongoing, but most people don't know about it because they don't go to the trails meetings or, you know. And George isn't here to tell you so.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandy.
Just another, so if you extend it in another direction too, that's going to even make it better. But the ADA access, eee.
Well, we're looking at it, you know, I think we're just going to take a look and see what we can do. Joe, do you have any comments you'd like to make about the trail? Thank you, Sandy.
I would just add to what Sandy said, we're working at trying to connect it all the way out to the Peavine. We are in talks with the VA. We just went through an archaeological study for that. And then to the south, we'd like to get out to White Spar. So really, and we linked to the rodeo grounds two years ago. So really, there's a spider web of those trails that'll connect downtown, so.
And yesterday, Bike and Pedestrian, we talked about the spoken hub and how we can make this. We're actually going to do a map and build on top of all of this, so. Great.
It's sometimes it's slow progress to get the entitlements. But once we get those, then you can move in. And what Michael said is true too, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit that we can move on quickly.
Great, thank you, Joe. Well, with no other comments, go ahead, Grant.
Just a caveat on what he was saying, but with a trail system, I didn't know that it was as extensive as it was. But maybe just a simply, you know, like an amusement park, you have the, you walk in, you have the billboards almost and it has like, you are here with a map system. And if we had those at all the trailheads and people just simply know like, okay, I want to go there. I just walk this way and you get there and there's a star. But you know, just kind of scatter it throughout the whole area so people, you know, they might walk on and they might never go more than 100 yards. But if there's a map on every single trailhead, a fixed map, then they can actually see like, oh, I can actually get a lot further than I thought. There's a lot more to what's here than just 100 yards down the road or something.
Grant, thank you and we appreciate having your business. Well, this meeting is adjourned and we will reconvene at 3 o'clock.